Thank you for joining us this evening. This forum is sponsored by the Los Trampas Council of PTAs and the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley to present candidates running for the Walnut Creek School District Board of Governors. There are three open seats and five candidates. Candidates on the ballot are, in alphabetical order, Gail Contreras, Heidi Hernandez-Gatti, Nathan Aindar, Amy Moss, Michaela Streznikah. The PTA and the League are nonpartisan organizations that do not support or oppose any candidate. We are here tonight as part of our key mission to educate and inform voters. As your moderator, I neither live nor vote in this district. However, in full disclosure, I have been a PTA president and I was a member of this governing board in the last century, when I did live in Walnut Creek. The forum is being recorded and will be replayed on the League's and the PTA's YouTube channels. We ask that audience members not record audio or video so as not to have misleading partial segments of our program. And please silence your cellphones now. I want to ask you in advance not to cheer or applaud any statement. Because if one person starts it, then somebody else feels like they have to do it too. It makes my job difficult and takes time away from the candidates. So please, no audience participation. Before the program began, the names of tonight's candidates were selected at random to determine opening speaking order. Closing statements will be in the reverse order. Each candidate will give a one and a half minute opening remarks and then a one and a half minute closing statement at the end. After the opening statements, we'll proceed to the question and answer segment of the program in which I will ask the questions that you have submitted. The questions can be written on three by five cards. They're available at the table up there, there's some on the chairs, and if you've already written one, please write another. It's, no quantity is a problem. And we have a League member, Marion, who is very experienced, and she's screening the questions by combining them because there are many on the same topic and, you know, finding the best way to phrase a question to bring in more points of view. So Marion's by helper there. So, I will alternate who I call on first during the Q and A to avoid giving any candidate an advantage or disadvantage. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. And if they wish, each candidate will have the opportunity for two rebuttals of one minute each upon their request. We have a timer visible to the candidates. There are two timers in the front. Speakers will see a yellow card with a 15 second warning, and then when their time is up, you'll see a red card. Thank you, ladies. Now, we will proceed with one and a half minute opening statements, beginning with, on my left, Amy Moss.
Good evening. I'm Amy Moss. I'm a current governing board member. I'm also the proud parent of two Walnut Creek School District graduates. It has been an honor to serve this district for the past eight years. It has been an adventurous tenure. When I was first elected, the district was in the midst of an overcrowded crisis, and the board was tasked with making lasting decisions about changing attendance boundaries and opening a new school. We had a lot of packed meetings, even more packed than tonight, and my email inbox was overflowing. It was a heck of an introduction to public service. That experience was a powerful lesson to me about how passionately Walnut Creek families care about their schools. In the emails I received, the universal sentiment was that people love their schools and they love the communities that they are a part of. Since that time, I've experienced other contentious issues, and I've made some decisions that I know not everyone is agreed with. But throughout it all, I've tried to make teaching and learning the center, the highest priority of competing needs in every decision. Even when my email inbox is quiet, I always remember that the decisions that I make matter to a lot of people. I think the district is stronger now than it was eight years ago. I believe I've played a part of its positive growth. I would like to continue, and I hope you will vote for me in this election. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heidi Hernandez-Gatti.
Good evening. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Los Trampas State Council of PTAs for hosting this important event. My name is Heidi Hernandez-Gatti, and I'm a first and second generation child of immigrants. I grew up here in Walnut Creek because my parents wanted me to grow up with an excellent education and community. So they chose Walnut Creek at a time when a middle-class family could buy a house on a modest salary. I've seen many things grow and change and believe it is my responsibility to help create and maintain a sense of community that has been so critical to my and my family's success. Over the last four years, I've been proud to serve the Walnut Creek School District and build upon a solid foundation of passports. As a community, we've been stretched, faced challenging transitions, learned and adapted to new methods. Our board has worked with transparency to our community and kept equity at the heart of our decision-making. We completed our Measure D bond projects on time and under budget. We navigated evolving science and shifting guidelines from federal, state, and county health departments. We provided every student in the district with a device, including internet access for those who needed it so they could learn in the face of a global pandemic. We've created a wellness program to support the social and emotional health of our children that is a model for school districts across the state. And we've done it all while maintaining a responsible and sustainable financial position. When I joined the board, it was with three essential priorities in mind: community, transparency, and excellence. I hope this evening we will be able to discuss these priorities and why they remain important. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Contreras.
Oh, my name is Gail Contreras. First and foremost, I'm a mom of two successful daughters. I have been an operating room nurse for over 30 years, caring for people in their most vulnerable state. I spent five years as a clinical coordinator with Orthopedic Slime Service. I created the standards of care and policies and procedures for this department from the ground up. I am confident that I can translate this experience to a successful tenure on the school board. My career in surgery has enabled me to teach and train many young and new staff. I have found that everyone learns a little differently. But at the core, they all learn best when they are excited and engaged, and I want to make sure that our children experience that in every classroom. I am seeking a position on the Walnut Creek School Board so that I can advocate for the students and ensure they have access to exceptional education, to provide transparency, with parents to be informed and have a voice on the decisions that will affect their children. I believe knowledge is power, and my priority is to ensure our children have the knowledge they need to be successful in their future. Thank you all for attending tonight. It shows you're engaged and care about your children's education and their future. I look forward to tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Michaela Streznikah.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for participating today. I am a medical doctor. I've worked in the community at John Muir for over 20 years. I'm a first-generation American. My father arrived from Czechoslovakia with his passport and a shirt on his back. He was a doctor who always believed that education is at the forefront of success. My mother was a school teacher who didn't know a word of English when she arrived here. I was raised in a home with my two brothers, my aunt, and my paternal grandmother. This strong family unit allowed my mother to go to community college while we were youngsters to get her degree and continue her education. I am the product of a public school education. My parents instilled in me the value of an education, and we were not allowed to fail in school. Their extensive participation in our education promoted our success. From a leadership role, I've had many leadership positions in the medical field, including thoracic medical director, cardiac surgery director, vice chair of surgery. I currently have a stepdaughter who's in Santa Clara College and two children who are in third and fifth grade. My priorities have shifted since I've had children, and my number one priority now is their education. My goals for school board is safety, pursuing an excellent education, and reintroducing respect into the classroom. I look forward to being a member of this community's school board.
Thank you. And finally, Nathan Aindar.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Los Trampas State Council for hosting this event, and thank you to everyone for coming. And in advance, thank you for the people who will hopefully be able to listen to this recording. Over the last four years, our district has accomplished a lot. Learning outcomes continue to be strong and outperform other districts. This board has a great relationship with our teachers, and teachers want to work here. Each school has mental health centers that are a model for other districts across the region. Our enrollment is stable, and we have a strong budget, and as everyone can see, new facilities here at TICE and WCI. As governing board member, I'm really proud of the role I've played in this progress. It's required some hard decisions, and there will be more hard decisions to come to ensure that every child in our district has the opportunity to be engaged, inspired, and empowered. I also bring the expertise needed for this work. Education is not only my passion, it's been my profession for my entire career. I've been a classroom teacher, I've been a school leader, and I've worked in districts across the United States. And now, I currently work with some of the most innovative education organizations across the globe. Most importantly, I'm personally invested in our schools. I have two daughters, one in Juana Vista and one in WCI. Our students, teachers, and families need a board that brings a deep understanding of our schools and the expertise required to navigate complex decisions. Thank you, and I look forward to sharing more with them.
Thank you. Now it's time for questions. I'll do my best to ensure that each candidate has the opportunity to answer each question. Personal attacks are not permitted. Statements made about other candidates must be in the public record, or they are not allowed. Our first question goes to Amy Moss. And five different people wrote a similar question, so it's a compound question. What is your experience in schools? PTA volunteer, parent volunteer? What inspired you to run, and what are you passionate about running for school board? So Amy, what's your experience? Okay.
My experience in the school. So I think that my son, my oldest child, was first involved in 2007, and actually thinking about my tenure recently, so I can say with confidence that I spent 13 years as a library volunteer through elementary and middle school. I was also an active PTA volunteer. I served as PTA president of Merwood, and I served on the boards in various different capacities at Merwood, WCI, and at Los Olivos. What else? I served on various district committees. For me, running for school board was somewhat of a natural progression. I had been actively involved at Merwood. Shoot, 15 seconds. And then I became interested in the district. I have a degree in education from Smith College, and so I've always been interested in education, fascinated by the way the brain develops and the learning process and that.
This is very short.
This is very short.
Okay, our next speaker is Michaela Streznikah. I think I'm gonna.
I'll be in the first place from now on.
Okay, Michaela, please.
Thank you. So I want to start by saying I feel like I have been personally in school for almost ever. I want to say, I want to start by saying that I feel like I've had a lengthy education that I've been in school forever to get to my career. In terms of volunteering in the classrooms with my children, I'm not sure how many individuals here are familiar with the PALS program, which is a program in the part of the elementary school. My stepdaughter was involved in that, and both of my children were involved in PALS. Unfortunately, it's no longer available during and after COVID. And more importantly, I'm a mother who sees how my kids get educated, my son and my daughter, although both, personally, I have a million children, have different teaching styles, and I have to respect it. Even when I was volunteering in the classroom, children have different teaching styles, and it's important to foster every child so they're successful.
Thank you. All right. My next speaker is Gail.
Both of my daughters are grown. I was involved in site council with Los Olivos back in 2009, and back then, we were voting on whether the kids could have laptops. So that shows you how advanced we got. Now it's all on their phone. But I believe education is important, and I'm at a point in my life where I want to help the community, and I felt that school board member would be a good place to start to get involved, make sure our kids are getting the education we need. The last couple years, there were shoveling, shutdowns, working in the hospital, we saw the kids coming in, the depression, the mental illness, to say it, the suicides, to be frank. And it was a lasting memory for me, and that was kind of the catalyst to say, I want to be part of the school board, I want to help the kids catch up on the last two years and advance for their future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Nathan?
Yeah, thank you. I'll talk about what inspired me to run, and it's really my parents. So first is, when we were growing up, my parents are first immigrants from India, and whenever they moved to the US, one of the things they said was, be part of the community that you call home. Walnut Creek is my home. And for me, there's nothing more important than being part of that community and being in service of that community. The second is, my dad taught me, never leave a job unfinished. I'm super proud of the work we've accomplished over the past four years, but there's more work to do. There's more work to do around equity, there's more work to do about supporting our students over the next few years, and there's also more work to do to ensure that all of our schools have amazing facilities and amazing opportunities for kids to learn. And then finally, my mom taught me to just be the best at what you do to help others. I bring a lot of experience and expertise in education, and I thought, can't really apply that anywhere besides work, so let me apply it to school board in a way that I can really help others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, Heidi.
I think, like many of us, I was fortunate enough to be drafted by the women that I like to refer to as the PTA mafia, women who support our schools and our children, who build community, and who brought me in and saw some leadership potential in me and allowed me to express some of that through various positions in PTA, through board service on the Walnut Creek Education Foundation, and as the campaign co-chair of the successful Measure D bond project. And in terms of inspiration, I think it won't be a surprise to anyone who's met my parents that it really has been about the building blocks of education and understanding the insistence upon excellence and education as opportunity. And I'm very passionate that all of our children need to have access to this education if we are going to have, continue to have, not only a strong community, but a strong and viable society.
Thank you very much. And now, keep the microphone. Heidi, you're going to answer this one first. The next question, again, it's a combination of a number of writers. The schools were closed for the pandemic, and what is the impact of the learning loss for children during the pandemic? It was real, I think, we all agree on that. But how do we close the gap? So Heidi, you're first.
Thank you. Well, I think we've done a lot of things to work towards closing the gap. I mentioned in my opening statement that we have, we've created a wellness program. We were very well positioned to, and we had begun that work when the pandemic happened. Children can't learn if they don't feel a sense of belonging, if they don't feel that they are able to be heard and be listened to. So that program was ready to go, and we were able to very thoughtful and take advantage of funding from state and federal sources to be able to make that program, to really be able to stand that up quickly. Additionally, I think, you know, we've been trying to support our teachers as well, because it's not just our students who have suffered during the pandemic, my own included. It's our teachers who have also likewise needed support and to be able to feel comfortable, safe, and confident in the facilities that we're providing, and in having professional development support to be able to move forward and to help our kids catch up.
Thank you. Michaela?
Good. So, thank you. I do agree that the school closures had a profound effect on children, both with their academic performance, their psychological performance, and I think their social skills. You know, when my son was only in the end of his fourth grade when the pandemic hit, and he lost a whole year of being with buddies and being with friends and learning some of the very important social aspects of what it is to be a kid, and how to play a team sport, and how to play nice in the sandbox, and, you know, all the things we talk about, inclusion and respect, and, you know, the whole, you know, the whole child. I think that from an academic standpoint, I think, I don't want to say it's the easiest thing to kind of correct, but tutoring sessions, after-school opportunities for education and classes that they haven't caught up. Mental health is a huge assessment, and having kind of a more forward and approachable way to reach that, and bringing the parents back into the equation, I think is essential.
Thank you. Amy?
Sorry. I would agree with some of what Heidi and Gail have just said. The learning loss is real, and that has been in combination with mental health challenges and social and emotional needs that are greater than we've ever seen before, particularly last year. I remember hearing stories from school staff about kids behaving around the playground where they just didn't know how to resolve disputes anymore. They've lost some of those skills. So I think this year, now we've had a year under our belt, we're better positioned to address those needs. I think one of the things that Walnut Creek School District does really well is data gathering, and we base a lot of our decisions on the data that we gather rather than anecdotal evidence. So we'll continue that process. We'll work collaboratively with our staff to make sure that everybody's on the same page in supporting the students and giving them what they need.
Thank you. Gail?
So I agree with what LaFleasman said. I don't think we'll never know the actual damage done to the kids for the last two years. I think it's immeasurable, to be honest. I think we can start by bringing the family together, having after-school programs so that the kids can catch up, having volunteer where the parents can come in, help accompany teachers who are struggling as well those last two years, do after-school stuff where the parents can come and help. Take testing so that we can see where the children really are, that we shouldn't have let them go to third grade if they still can't read, because they're not going to benefit from third grade when the other kids are reading, so that we make that staying back to grade not a punishment, but unfortunately a necessity at this time, because this is how we're going to help them and then propel them, because then they'll advance quickly with this help, so that then they can probably get back to the grade. And then offer summer school. Offer summer school so that they can catch up on that two years they missed. Thank you.
And Nathan?
Yeah, I'll agree with what's been said. What I'll probably share is more of what as a district we've done. So one of the things I'm proud of as a district is recovery for our students didn't start this school year. It started in February 2021, so right when schools were able to open, that's when our recovery started, and that's when this board started working. And so immediately, that included things like recovery programs, intervention, looking at data to figure out exactly what our students' needs are and how best they can be supported. I forget the date, but we had mental health centers open on all of our campuses quite early and ready for the start of this school year. And then one of the things I'm really excited about is this district is taking seriously the extended learning opportunity funding available from the state to provide extended learning opportunities at every campus. And again, that is something that we've mentioned, but one of the things I'm proud of as a district is we've put a lot of those things into practice, and really, the next year will be, how do we make sure those things fully implement and reach all of our members?
Thank you. And Nathan, you'll enter this one first?
Yes.
Again, it's a combination of different writers. How would you support the work we've done and continue to do with diversity and inclusion? And then camped onto that, we're adding, improve protecting the trans and LGBTQIA students on school grounds, and what does the board do to support the LGBTQ students in this district? Nathan?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think first, just to start, it may be helpful to spell that this is not a fact, this is not a, something that people are talking about, so we're doing it in this district. Saretha Hammond, an amazing researcher, has written about and done research on the importance of identity development in early childhood and adolescent development. So the notion of who you are, what you look like, what sexual orientation you are, that matters for a child's development, it's really important for a healthy childhood development. And so we focus on that, and we pay attention in this district, not because, again, it's a fact, but because there's hard signs that suggest that's actually what matters for kids to have healthy development. And so some of the things we've done is, especially our practices, I'll just focus on our practices on equity, it is things that are about creating multiple approaches for kids to learn. It is about having books that look like, where characters look like some of our kids. It is about connecting learning to students' real-life learning experiences. And those are some of the things I'm quite proud of that we've done in this district.
Thank you. Next speaker is Heidi.
Thank you. I'll just try to add on a little to what I think Nathan spoke very particularly about, and to say that some other initiatives that we continue to look at is our curriculum development, and how that's reflective of our students and the population and the, you know, evolving sense that we have of ourselves. I think that it's really, that our district has an equity committee that's comprised of administrators, teachers, and a school board member that really looks at, again, not only looks at the data, but looks at our community and where it is that we are and how it is that we, as a specific school community, need to engage with each other in order to have a productive dialogue and a real conversation. I think at the board level, what we do is we set policy. So we set policies around bullying, around diversity, around what that means and how it is than it is to the school administration and the schools themselves to determine how we work within the boundaries of those policies.
Thank you very much. Michaela?
Thank you. So, I think these are very challenging questions and challenging issues that every school board in the country is going to be facing. I think my thought about that goes back to the basic fundamentals of respect, where children have to learn to respect other children, teachers, not for how they look, but for who they are. And building that foundation is that you respect other people for the person that they are, the inside, the good they are, the qualities they have. I absolutely think things like bullying, cyberbullying, threats have to be of no tolerance on the campuses, that just can't be allowed for any type of, any type of discrimination. I think diversity is challenging, because I don't think you can force diversity, but you have to welcome diversity. And diversity will continue as the communities change, and our goal is to have our children respect all new people coming in for who they are and for the good they are on the inside.
Thank you. Amy?
So it was similar to what other candidates have already said. I'm really proud of the work that Walnut Creek School District has done so far, but I recognize that it's not something that ends, you don't finish this work. I think that, I was looking back at some of my materials that we've done over the past couple of years, and what most came forward was what a robust effort it is. It's not just a matter of a single professional development speaker. For example, we have developed a plan that's multifaceted. It includes a look at our curriculum, it includes additional staff support, it includes professional development, it includes a look at our hiring practices. It's very comprehensive, and it will take a long time, it will be an ongoing effort. But I think it's tremendously valuable, because like other folks have already pointed out, it's about making sure that all of our students feel safe and comfortable on our campuses and that they have a sense that they belong here.
Thank you. Gail?
I pulled up some stats on the demographics of our students, and we have 2% Filipino, 14% Hispanic, 55% white, 2% black, 8% two or more races, and 15% Asian. So as long as our community is represented and the kids are attending our school, we are diverse. We're diverse, and we represent the community of the people that live here. So as more people move in and those kids are going to school, they should be accepted for Lula Vadeo. And inclusion means, to me, including the family. I'm a strong opponent of the family being involved in the decisions-making, being involved in the school board, so that when we hear their voice, that our decisions are based on their input. And I guess that's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, our next question, yet again, is a combination of different questions. So let's see if the question isn't longer than the answers will be. We're going to start with Heidi as the first answer. What is the role or responsibility of board members in creating school curriculum? And with that is library materials? Does the board participate in?
Does the board participate in considering library materials? And what books, about what kids read? So it's a lot of questions about curriculum and library materials. Okay, Heidi?
So curriculum is developed and set at the state level. That's not something as a board that we are deciding on. What we do choose are the specific materials that are utilized in any given set of material, whether that's a history for some of the eighth graders or whether it's a math curriculum. Those decisions are generally made, and when those choices are brought to us, they're brought to us by an empowered panel of teachers and administrators who are often also utilizing student voice in order to inform what it is that is the most engaging curriculum that we can provide based on standards that are set at the state level. In terms, I can't imagine us sitting around moderating a specific course story. This, our interest is in, I think as Nathan said really well earlier, is in ensuring that students see themselves reflected in materials. And if those materials don't feel appropriate to that student, that there are a plurality of choices that they have in every classroom and every locker.
Thank you very much. And next is Nathan?
Thank you. Let's get to the kind of part of this which is first, any parent can talk with their teacher to learn about the types of books that are available for their child and the curriculum that's available in their classroom. Any parent can do that. We have multiple parents who do that. And also, as a board, nor, I believe, for my experience as a teacher, but in talking to other teachers, it's actually antithetical to, for a teacher to force a book on a child. Many of our teachers encourage children to choose a book that is appropriate for them. But the heart of this question is something that's been talked about, which is banning books or banning curriculum or the board making choice in our curriculum. I fundamentally disagree with that. I absolutely fundamentally disagree with the notion that a book can be banned just because one person finds it objectionable. I also support my students, I support my children, but also students reading a diversity of books. One of the things that I think is a hallmark of quality education is students reading and experiencing different points of view, especially those views that challenge their life.
Thank you. Gail?
So as a newcomer and not been on a board before, it's nice to know the state decides the curriculum. But at the same time, the state's curriculum, we're almost at the bottom of the list of states. Our rankings for test scores, we're in the bottom of the 50 states. So something needs to be looked at, our curriculum that the state is addressing us with it. We're in the 49th ranking out of 50 states. I think that reading is important for every child. I think they should turn off their phone, turn off their laptop, open a book and read because it's different, tactile. You understand it better, your imagination gets kicked in. And that helps you with inclusion because you read about other people, other places, the fantasy of reading, history, Shakespeare. You can go on with that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Micaela?
Thank you. So again, I'm not, I've not been on the board before. I remember all the nuances of how the process goes for picking, whether it's textbooks, books, extracurricular activities. I think it is so important that the kids be a voice in that choice because if the children want to read a book and if they want to learn about something, they're more likely to pick up that book and read it. If it's something that, I agree, I think that assuming that every child has a similar interest is probably not appropriate. I don't know how the panel chooses which books they chose. As a board member, I would be very willing to participate in that activity and again, foster the idea that kids want to open their minds to the world around them and have that ability to do so.
Thank you. Amy? Yes, so as others have said, the state chooses the curriculum, not the school board. The state also, in terms of textbooks, they provide us with a range of options. And we put together a committee of our staff members who evaluate and test those options and then decide which ones to adopt. So as somebody else already pointed out, we have committees of people who make those decisions. In terms of the specific books that are used in classrooms and in libraries, again, that's, I don't believe that the board should be the ones making those decisions. We hire professional, well-educated staff members who make those decisions. I mentioned earlier that I'm a longtime library volunteer. I've worked with many different librarians in this district and I am super impressed with that group of people. They work as a team to make decisions that about books that are developmentally appropriate for the children in our schools. And I respect and value those decisions. Thank you. Okay, Nathan, you get this one first. There are a number of questions about critical race theory. Could you please explain what it is and how does it impact elementary curriculum? And your thoughts about teaching in this arena?
So, so first of all,
Graduate level question.
Yeah, so race theory is a gradual level kind of law theory about how systems in the United States are shaped and informed by race. So to be clear, critical race theory is not taught in elementary schools. But to be clear, what is taught in elementary schools is exposing kids to diverse viewpoints, exposing kids to books that are outside of the traditional canon of books that are read historically in most elementary schools. I think this whole notion of like critical race theory has become a lightning rod to draw attention away from something that is actually very important for kids to learn. Again, as I said earlier, the notion of teaching kids about race, teaching kids about difference, teaching kids about their identity is essential to their development. And so I think this notion of critical race theory, that's not applicable for what we do as a board. But what is applicable is about teaching kids about who they are and what background they're in.
Thank you. Amy? Yeah, I don't know very much about critical race theory because we don't teach it. So it's not really applicable to our school system. What I do think is important is to think about the equity work that we're doing and helping kids to find that belonging in our classrooms. That is what's critical to me. And it doesn't matter who they are, what they look like, what family background they come from, what religion they are. If they are native Walnut Creekers or if they moved here from another area, what we really want to do is develop belonging for all of our kids so that when they're in the classroom, they feel like they belong and that they are going to be successful learners. That's what's most important. Thank you. Heidi?
As has been stated, critical race theory is a legal theory taught in law schools. And it's become, as Nathan said, a lightning rod for our conversations, which is incredibly frustrating because our children need to be seen and heard and valued for who they are, their diversity of experience, their diversity of family, and however they come to us. It's our role as a school district to be able to create a container that allows them to reach their full potential, to not be, not have the circumstances of their birth become a barrier to their success and the opportunities that they have. And so to the extent that we have a role to play, it is a role around providing that container in a way that is supportive of our students and their families, that is respectful of who we are and where we come from, and that acknowledges that when we work together, that we are stronger and better for it.
Thank you. Gail?
I feel that when race is a topic that is a priority of a discussion, you are doing a disservice to the children. They need to learn that they are human beings, that they love one another, and have the respect. You treat the other person the way you want to be treated. That's how I grew up. And I think we need to get back to that, that it's a generic, general, respectful feeling. Treat people the way you want to be treated, not the way they look, not the color of their skin, not what they're wearing, not the car they drive. Work hard, study hard, be a good person and a great human being. And that's how you'll help the world become a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Micaela?
Thank you. So, you know, I'm going back to the basics where I think that we should be focusing a lot of our energies on, you know, the math, the writing, the reading, the history, you know, making sure that that sound education, which we need to be successful in the future, you know, that has to be the foundation that we need to focus on. Again, critical race theory is not something I'm familiar with and it's not something that I did a lot of research on. I'm glad, I'm glad to know from the board members that that's not something that's focused on in the elementary schools because even I don't know how to explain that. But again, I go back to the idea of respect. I think we all have to be, our kids have to say, okay, we're all different. None of us, no two people are the same. Let's get the education we need to be successful in life and the careers that we choose, whatever path that is. And while we're there, let's be kind to each other. Let's respect each other's differences, embrace the differences, and you can just be better people.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, Heidi, you get this one first. There are a number of questions about teachers' unions, so I'll just combine them all. So the Walnut Creek School District has a history of working with its stakeholders, including its labor partners. How would you support this relationship? So what is, what does the school board relationship with the teachers' union look like? And do you have any affiliation with the teachers' union?
So I'll say that I am personally a huge supporter of unions and collective bargaining, that I'm very proud that we have a strong and solid relationship with our teachers' union, that as in my term as board president, I had the opportunity to have regular communication with the leaders of both of our school unions. And that those relationships are critical to the success and the excellence that happens in the classroom every day. If our teachers and our staff aren't supported, then our students can't feel comfortable and supported as well. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Walnut Creek Teachers Association. And I would say that without our teachers, our education would be severely lacking without the time, effort, and energy that our teachers expend above and beyond every day. We would not be able, we would not have the strong programs that we have. We would not have the sense, the increasing scores that we have, and we would not be a strong community.
Thank you. Nathan?
Yeah, so when I was a classroom teacher, I was focused on my kids. I was focused on what they needed, what I wanted to do in my classroom. I didn't have the time or energy to expend on what my contract is going to look like, what my salary is going to be, all of those things. And I was so grateful for union leadership in the districts that I worked in that they took care of that for me and they protected me and they ensured that I could truly focus on what's important in the classroom. So one, I'm just incredibly supportive of unions and teachers' unions and teachers' unions in general. Second is, we have a phenomenal relationship with our teachers' union. I'm very happy and very just pleased with, truly, that it's a partnership. I think there's often a sense in other places, this adversarial relationship. All throughout the pandemic, all throughout my four years on the board, we have had a phenomenal relationship with the union. And as Heidi said, I'm incredibly proud of the relationship we have and also proud to be endorsed by the Walnut Creek Teachers Association.
Thank you. Amy? Yeah, I think that this district has had a strong, stable relationship, labor relationships over the past many number of years. And the reason that we have that is because we invest in relationships. We work cooperatively with our teachers and our classified staff. When our bargaining process is together, everybody sits at the table together. And I think that that emphasis on building trusting relationships has really paid off in this district. Because when you have people who are unhappy, it's a distraction from the learning. They can't focus on doing their jobs. They can't focus on the kids. So we are really very heavily investing in those relationships with our teachers and our classified staff. And I will also share that I am endorsed by the Walnut Creek Teachers Association as well as the SCA Chapter 202, which is our classified union. Thank you. Micaela?
Well, thank you. Unfortunately, I'm a not, having not been on the board, I'm not familiar with how the school boards work with teachers' unions. That being said, I'm a huge supporter of teachers. The kids aren't going to learn if the teachers don't want to be there, if the teachers don't want to be engaged, if the teachers are not happy with the position they're in. Again, not having the familiarity of how much influence the board has on negotiations with the teachers' unions, I'm a little bit disadvantaged in this question. But without good teachers, our children are not going to want to go to school. They're not going to want to learn. Again, I'm from the public school system. The biggest asset the school system had were teachers that encouraged me and were always supportive and 100% were there for their students, and that's what made it successful. So if the negotiation with the teachers' board is part of the role, my role would be to have happy teachers that want their children, that students succeed.
Thank you. Gail?
I have two brothers that are teachers, so I'm pro-teacher. I think great teachers are hard to come by. And my priority on being on the school board for Walnut Creek is that I'm a pro-parent and pro-child union. I don't think that they have enough of a voice. So I'm pro-parent union and pro-child student union. And, you know, I guess you're going to either love me or hate me, but I think the teachers' unions are a very powerful force and we need to give our voices back to the parents and the students. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, Micaela, you'll enter this first. Do you support Measure J and what is your vision for organizing the schools? And also adding to that, what's your vision for what a 21st century school looks like?
Thank you. So one of the things we haven't had a chance to talk about and that's a top priority for me is the safety within the schools. Again, we're in a very safe environment, but we'd be naive to think that bad things can't happen in this community. I think one of the most important things I would want to see in our schools is increasing the safety, increasing, you know, security on the campuses, making sure that the children are safe. So when you drop a child off, you know that when you come back at the end of the day, they will be safe and well cared for. I think modernizing the schools is important. Technology is important. That's what the future is. You know, getting children used to coding at an early age, being computers happy at an early age. Again, motivating them in some of the fields that are high-tech and that are going to be good careers for the children, I think is very important.
Thank you. Amy? Yeah, I'm a huge supporter of Measure J. I'm really excited by the modernization work that this district is doing, it has been doing, since the passage of Measure D, which was in 2016. And we're hoping to continue that work with Measure J. I also have 200 bond signs in my garage, so if anyone needs one, hand me up. And I have a Big Ten in my car, so. So let me see, what else do I want to say? I'm so excited by this topic because this district has invested really a lot of energy. All throughout that pandemic, we did modernization at WCI. We managed to finish that. That's amazing. And look around at Tyse Creek. Look at this campus. So our vision is that every school in Walnut Creek School District will be as modernized as WCI and Tyse Creek are right now. And the goal of that is not just to modernize the spaces, but to transform the learning that's happening within those spaces. Can I use my external voice? Oh, yeah. Now, Gail, want to answer the question about Measure J?
Yeah, I pulled out the budget. It's 150 pages for '22, '23. No student, no parent, no one can understand this budget. So I understand that we want to modernize and that we want to take the schools into the 21st century. I would like a better understanding of where the money's going now that we're spending. We get over $50 million not being in the system and being on the board. And I'm not aware of how it's all spent. But reading this, I still don't know where it's all going. So I would love to see more information about where the money's going to get spent, when, if and when Measure J passes, and how they're going to utilize that for the school. And the bond's going to go to 2055, so that's, you know, 25 years from now. So I just would like a little more transparency on where the money's going to go, how they're going to spend it, and on what.
Thank you. I'm sorry, got a little lost here. Heidi, please, next?
Sure. I think the shorthand for Measure J is we've done a really amazing job updating our middle school campuses, including this campus here at Tyse Creek. And it's time for 60-year-old buildings across our elementaries to do the same. And we have an opportunity to, bond dollars can only be spent on facilities projects. They sit above and apart from our regular school district budget. A budget, by the way, that goes, that spends about 85% on personnel. A budget, by the way, that goes, that spends about 85% on personnel, which is appropriate for a school to do. The Measure J is overseen by the bond committee. Our Measure D bond committee has been really an engaged and amazing group of parents, so there is always community oversight in this type of a facilities bond. And I'm very excited to see, to see us be able to bring this modernization of the campuses, to be able to upgrade our schools to the facilities that our students, our teachers, and our community truly deserves.
Thank you. And Nathan?
Heidi, you still have my answer. First of all, just to educate everyone, because it may not be clear, Measure J is a bond measure that's on the November ballot to fund the modernization of our schools. So, if you have any questions on what the bond measure is for, what it can be used for, what the bonds can't be used for, what oversight there is, I can't look at my device for the rules, but I believe the website is yesonj.info. But you can read all about it and answer many of the questions that were surfaced in this conversation. But, the reason I'm supportive of Measure J is, one, it provides flexible learning environments for our students. So, for anyone who's had the pleasure of walking around Tyse or walking around WCI, the facilities are phenomenal. And what's most important is that it supports instruction in ways that are, in ways that teachers really want to, teachers want to teach. I think the second is it supports technology-enabled classroom, again, to support what teachers are doing on a daily basis. But, I would just encourage everyone who has any questions about Measure J to look at the website, but I'm 100% supportive of Measure J.
Thank you very much. And Amy, you wanted a one-minute rebuttal?
So, I was already thinking about my rebuttal. So, what I wanted to talk about is the 20, the vision of 21st century education, and I wanted to share a story. A number of years ago, I went to Indian Valley, and I was touring classrooms there. And I went into one of the upper-grade classrooms, and I was just blown away by what that teacher was doing. She had been so creative in her classroom environment. She had, she was walking around, she was doing whole-class instruction. She was walking around with an iPad in her hand, and she was casting that up to the smartboard that was in her classroom. The kids were not sitting at individual desks. Some were sitting on the floor, on cushions, some were sitting on a couch, some were sitting at desks or at tables, some were working in pairs, some were working alone, some were working in groups. And it was just an incredible little experience to see that happening, and what, how she was untethered from the front of the room, and she was walking around and checking in with all the kids, and how collaborative that education was. And that is what I would like to see for every kid in our district, in every classroom.
Thank you very much. Now, unfortunately, we are running out of time, so we have time for one more question. And the first speaker will be Gail. What do you think is the greatest challenge in our school district regarding special education?
You know, that's a really good question. I tried to look up special education online, and you have to form an account, fill out an account, so that you can access to what's available. So, it was very hard for me, during my research, to actually see what special education is and what it entails, and who benefits from it. And I'm not on the board, so I don't know what the pass has, but it was very hard for me to go online, go to the website, special education Walnut Creek School District. You had to file in an account with a child's name to see what benefits they offered. And so, I was unable to know what they have, so it's hard for me to answer that question.
Thank you very much. Next is Heidi?
Special education is a huge challenge, because it covers such a wide variety of challenges and issues. And there is, and it is probably the most specialized and most tailored. I think we've done a pretty good job of continuing to improve our professional development for teachers in being able to resource our classrooms differently. But the biggest challenge is funding. The federal government is supposed to provide 40% of our, of the funds for our special education program. On a good year, they'll maybe provide 20%. And that means that we have to come up with those dollars in a general fund. And we want to do that. We want to support every child to reach their full potential, regardless of what it is that those challenges are, whether they're learning challenges, whether they're physical challenges. And as a public school district, we are responsible to ensure that every single child is able to reach their potential and to get that appropriate education.
Thank you. Nathan?
Yeah, I think, one, happy to help orient towards some of the resources. There's actually a fair amount of resources on the school website on special education. But, I just bring from the teacher perspective on this, which is, one of the biggest challenges is navigating federal mandates and navigating processes, navigating paperwork, navigating a bunch of what's required for special education teachers to really do what's most important of them and what they love, which is work with their students. And let's not say that paperwork is not important or not valuable, but often there is so many mandates and so many kind of hoops that teachers need to jump through. And so, I think one of the things that I'm just super excited about, what we've been able to do on this board, is especially with the leadership of Amy Espinoza, the district staff, is just to really streamline a lot of that and make it so that our special education processes and the work that teachers do, and the work that parents do, and IP meetings and by forming, et cetera, is truly something that is enabling teachers to really do what they love, which is work with their special needs students.
Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, I think that the biggest challenge with special ed is meeting the needs of each child, because they are all so very unique and different. And special education is highly regulated, as Nathan already pointed out. There's just numerous, numerous laws that we need to comply with, and it's really challenging to support our staff who work with the kids, to make sure that they're always in compliance with those laws, and that they're truly meeting the needs of the students. It's really, it's a team effort, for sure. And, oh, I lost my train of thought. And it's, it's an ongoing process to continually get better in the realm of special education. I think not just for our district, but for every district. One of the things we brought up earlier was negotiations and teachers' unions. And one of the things that I'm excited for is that in our most recent round of negotiations, we did collaboratively decide on some creative approaches to supporting teachers working with our special needs population. And I'm excited to see the results of that work.
Thank you very much. And finally, Micaela?
Thank you. So, you know, my younger brother, who's just two years younger than me, had a severe seizure disorder, he developed significant mental delay, and he spent his whole life in special education programs. This is, you know, half a century ago, so I realize I'm dating myself a little bit. But it's so crucial that students who have special needs have them met. Again, not knowing enough about how the budget is, and this is back on the East Coast, so of course things have probably changed. It's important for me to understand more about how these special ed programs, again, what are the barriers to get students to get the education that they need? You know, what are the specifics? Like, there's obviously this physical development, reading, math, in this case, mental development, mental retardation levels and educational barriers. But I think it is important that we have a program that is funded, so that these students can have as much of an education as they possibly can, and, again, have a profitable education experience.
Thank you very much. And thank you, audience, for the great questions. I'm so sorry if I didn't ask yours, there's still so many good questions here, we don't have time for them. Hopefully, if the candidates can stay a few minutes late after the program, if you could come on up and ask your question to the candidates, they might be able to answer. So now, we're going to go to the concluding remarks. It's one and a half minutes for our closing statement, and we'll begin backwards with Nathan Ayngar.
Great. Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters, thank you to the Los Trampas Creek Council of PTAs, and to everyone who's participated, and thank you as well to folks who've managed to listen to this hour-long recording. Everyone has shared a lot today, so I'll just keep my comments brief. The next four years will require some really tough decisions to further improve learning outcomes, make effective use of our financial resources, potentially manage a forthcoming recession, ensure our parents are caretakers and true partners with this district. We need a board that is focused on what's best for kids. We need a board that has been invested in our schools and has consistently done so. We need a board that brings expertise and experience in school policy to make some of these tough decisions. And we need a board that knows how to collaborate with one another and with our labor partners and all of our partners in the district to make some of these choices. I humbly ask for your vote to be part of that board. Thank you all for joining tonight, and hope the wonderful...
Thank you. Micaela?
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone's participation, and thank you for hosting us. I know as a newcomer and a new kid on the block, it would be a lot for me to learn. If I get elected to the school board, I'm 100% vested in making the best school board decisions for the community, for the children of our community. I have a lot of leadership skills that are outside the area of education, but I think I bring those with me in terms of, you know, dealing with different personalities, listening to different points of views, being respectful for other people's opinions, and incorporating that into decisions that will benefit as many students as possible, realizing that there are going to be times when some people are just not going to agree, and there's some issues that are very challenging to have 100% consensus on. I'm willing to give this 150% effort. Again, I know it's stuff, this is our first time, or my first time, in a political arena, but I would very much like to participate and continue the hard work the board has already done over the years, and I commend all the work that they've done, especially through the last four years.
Thank you. Gail Conferes.
I want to say thank you to everyone for coming today. This has been a very interesting couple of months for me, learning a lot, opening my eyes to a lot that's going on in the community, understanding, being a board member is a very serious position to take. I do not take this lightly. I'm excited about being on the board and bringing the community together with the child, the family, the teachers, the administrators, and the whole, the community as a whole, to help raise our children and be the best they can be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heidi Hernandez-Gan.
Thank you. My family knew that education was the key to opportunity, and their hard work is the reason I am able to sit here and run here today. Community doesn't just happen, it's built, brick by brick, on a foundation of trust. It is my responsibility to create that foundation that brings me here tonight. And since my children have entered the Walnut Creek School District, I've had the privilege of serving to set that foundation. When I joined the governing board, it was to include three priorities: community, transparency, and excellence. Community is all of us together. It requires our students, staff, and families to feel that we all belong and have valuable experiences and perspectives to share. Community invites open dialogue and honest conversation. Transparency means that we can access the information we need to be informed about how our district uses resources in service to our students, and that even if the decisions are not what we would have hoped, that the rationale for those decisions is clear and honest. Excellence is what happens every day in the classroom between teachers and students. And even so, it encompasses so much more. It's the pride we take in each other, the support we give to our teachers and staff. It is committing every day to our vision to engage, inspire, and empower all learners. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Amy Moss?
When I first ran for school board in 2014, I was motivated by a simple desire to work on behalf of the system to make it the best that it can be. Fast forward eight years, and my motivation really hasn't changed that much. I am really enthusiastic about the positive changes that are in motion with our district, and I would like to continue to support that growth. I believe that my experience on the board provides continuity and a valuable perspective in this time of tremendous change. I love Walnut Creek. I love being a part of this district and this team of talented educators who have chosen to spend their careers here. Education is important. It's important to me. I am a true believer that the strength of our country's democracy rests on the foundation of a well-educated populace. I will continue to work hard on behalf of all students to ensure that they have the opportunity to grow into successful, contributing citizens. I ask for your vote on November 8th, or earlier if you're a male voter. Although I can't promise that you will agree with every single decision that I make, I absolutely commit to being an engaged community member and to always make the needs of the students the center of every decision. In conclusion, I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the Los Trampas Creek Council of PTAs. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and thank you also to everyone who took the time to come.
Thank you very much. Now, these are your five candidates for Walnut Creek School District Board of Governors. Thank you for your participation this evening, we couldn't have done it without you, and thank you, candidates, for running for school board. It's not always a glorious or glamorous position, but it's certainly well needed in the community. So, for further information about the candidates, issues, and voting, on the seats on the tables near the door are some bookmarks from VotersEdge.org. This is the League of Women Voters website with information about candidates. We offer the platform, candidates can upload information about themselves, and the information about bond measures or propositions are there as well. So, be sure to vote on November 8th, or hopefully earlier. So, thank you very much.